Next item is roll call. We look all cozy here. Clerk Leslie will take the role.
Heckam?
Here.
Martins?
Here.
Killian?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Boettenski?
Here.
McElainy?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Hertz?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
All members are present. Great, thank you. Next item, proclamations. I'm not going to read them all, but I would like to tell you what they are. We have World Migratory Bird Day. We have Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Awareness Day. We'll have a presentation on that at our next meeting. And then Monk Heritage Month in April, celebrating 45 years of Monk families being here in Wausau. You can read all of those on the website. All right, next item on our agenda. Pre-registered citizens for matters appearing on the agenda and other public comment. I have everybody signed up here. First person, Bruce Krau. You'll have three minutes. If you could give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Krau, 1115 North 10th Street. This comment is my personal opinion. Contrary to the condescending rewrite of facts by corporate lawyers, but in line with the testimony of the older persons involved with the decision at the time, the intent to rezone 1300 Cleveland Avenue was clearly an attempt to mitigate some of the harm of dispossession of homes resulting from the Phase 1 Thomas Street project. Since this issue has surfaced, a flurry of public responses ensued. With the exception of the statement by the 3M plant manager, all favored rezoning for residential purposes, and many proclaimed a resounding and simple no to any expansion of industrial activity which includes 3M and Colby. Heightening their concern about the safety of neighbors' gardens and drinking water was the finding of high levels of a toxic metal known as the poisoner's poison. In the context of a century-old track record of mounting examples exposed of industrial contamination in the area, this concern has been further amplified and is also illuminating. The 1300 Cleveland Avenue issue has once again revealed to us the simple realities of the forces in play that determine our safety and quality of life. The force of residents of the most diverse and working-class area in the city is generated by their desire for a clean and comfortable neighborhood to successfully raise a family and age in place. They appreciate the economic advantages industry can provide. They assume the companies in the city are able to provide this without harming workers in the surrounding neighborhoods. Industry has failed to provide this safety. In fact, they've been repeatedly found to hide the toxic, life-altering effects and dumping of toxic waste products into the environment. 3M, for example, had concealed the effects of its forever chemicals, the PFAs, for decades. Higher rates of cancer, low birth weight, and birth defects have been found in higher numbers in areas surrounding their plants from Minnesota to Australia. This kind of force carries the gargantuan weight of a 119-year-old behemoth that operates in 70 countries with close to 100,000 workers and an estimated wealth of $113 billion. This force has allowed the company to allegedly settle several million-dollar lawsuits without having to admit liability. In the middle rests you, the force of the City Council of Wausau, whose mandate is to advocate for and support the livelihoods of all Wasauans, to level the playing field, not to allow rich and powerful to rewrite the narrative of what regular working people ultimately want and need. We ask the City Council uses its force tonight in favor of the people most directly impacted by their decision. Rezone and re-home. Thank you.
Thank you. That was exactly three minutes. Next, I have Teri Killian. If you could give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Teri Killian, 133 East Thomas Street in Wausau. I am a volunteer member of Citizens for a Clean Wausau. At the forefront of the 1300 Cleveland Avenue issue is something simple, and that something is a government error that resulted in the unintentional zoning of this property to industrial. Honest errors occur, but they must be corrected. The people expect that local government will correct its mistakes without exception. Government should be held to a high standard, not a low bar. This situation is no different. That being said, there is another component of this situation that is equally concerning, but not accidental on the part of City Hall. That component is the entertaining of inappropriate future expansion of industrial operations from 3M Company and Colby &amp; Colby on this property, next to homes in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And City Hall is actually continuing to entertain this expansion, expansion that is against the overwhelming will and voice of the people. And City Hall continues to do so against common sense and without disclosing or discussing the serious environmental histories of both of these companies. We can get into the details of those serious environmental histories in the near future, and we will, but tonight know that just eight years after 3M Company built its plant in the city, the then-mayor of Wausau, Mayor Borowitz, in 1937 declared that the building of the plant in the city was a serious mistake due to pollution from the plant. That means very apparently that we have lived with 84 years of a local government's serious mistake. And public records indicate that Colby &amp; Colby also has an environmental history, very worthy of future discussions. Please fix your zoning mistake and protect those you represent by disallowing further industrial expansion in residential areas. It's time to not only remediate soil on properties which the city owns, but it's time to remediate the serious policy mistakes that the city also owns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Rita Pakel. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Rita Pakel, 1310 Maple Hill Road, Wausau. History tells us that industrial companies have not always been good stewards of the environment. Many have polluted and ruined the area around with little regard to nearby occupants. Even in modern times with laws protecting the environment, some companies have bent or disregarded these laws, resulting in only a fine. Residential and industry do not mix well. Return the Cleveland property to residential zoning. Industrial parks are for industry. Residential areas are for residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Douglas Stang, who is called in. If you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Douglas Stang, representing 3M. 3M Wausau is located at 144 Rosgren Street in Wausau. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We just want to state that we believe zoning decisions should be made thoughtfully, objectively, and based on all available facts, and we believe there's no rush to rezone 1300 Cleveland Avenue. A city-owned property, remediation will be different for industrial use as compared to the residential use, and remediation and redevelopment discussions are in the early stages, and it's premature to make decisions about the ultimate use to which the property will be put. The city owns the parcel and therefore has complete control over its future. Zoning is intertwined with decisions that need to be made regarding environmental remediation and redevelopment of the parcel. The best process will allow all interested parties a full and fair hearing on all issues, including redevelopment and remediation along with zoning. It is important for the city to bind its own hands to the zoning now when it lacks the required information to make an informed decision about the best future use of the property. 3M did submit a proposal for use of the portion of this property as part of the April 2020 RFP process. We continue to be interested in parcel, specifically the northwest section of that parcel. We would highlight that 3M's original proposal did not include any request for tax breaks or other incentives, and our goal continues to be collaboration with the city and the neighborhood to arrive at a development plan that would consider the interest of all constituencies. We ask that you hold off on zoning recommendations until the use of the property is determined based on the proposals of actual interested parties that may help address concerns in the city and the district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you very much. Next person I have is Donna Krausie. You have three minutes. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Donna Krausie. I live at 1036 South Fourth Avenue, and I'm here to talk about a few things regarding the city transportation, public transportation. I'm presently a board member for District 10, which I'm also in Lou Larson's ward. My background is a little bit. I've been a corporate salesperson, actually, to 3M Business Products at one time. I'm usually a teacher in inner-city. I sold the first Honda cars in the United States. I have driven about 10 different kinds of cars, from MG Midgets to Grand Caravans. When I lived in Cleveland, Ohio, they had a great bus system 24/7. And in Wausau, I moved back here, and in the late '90s, from 1995 to 2000, I rode the bus. I did not have a car. I had a lot of problems then. I don't know if any of you are aware of bullies, have ever been bullied or have been bullied, but the bus drivers took delight in injuring me by slamming on the brakes many different times. I have a TNJ disability, cervical injuries, and at the time, I didn't own, but I had fibromyalgia and osteoarthritis. I ended up having to wear a neck brace, and I lived an almost daily pain, from pain pill to pain pill. I had a great acupuncture physician, so I'm doing better. But anyway, this was a kind of a game the bus drivers enjoyed. They delighted in this, and it was like a bullying gang. I never really, I don't recall if I made an issue of it or not, but this was in the late '90s. Then my mother bought me a car, and I got better, and I started some businesses, and I owned two vehicles. My last vehicle broke down, so I've been riding the bus for the past four years. And I'd like to say I've seen some bad situations on the bus, and I've been a victim of some bad bus driving. And there is one bus driver who has received over 25 complaints against him, and I'm not sure in what timeframe. But it seems that, and citizen groups have met with soybird and RTA and so on, over the years, nothing has come of it. And I want to commend Mayor Rosenberg for having HR take citizen complaints, disability and riders' complaints, and looking into the situation, because even Mayor Milkie, and in the past, nothing has been resolved from the abuse of disability riders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Beverly Fullgert. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Mayor Rosenberg, members of the council. My name is Beverly Fullgert. I reside and own the property at 909 Green Hill Drive in Wausau, Wisconsin. I also own the property at 818 North 1st Street in Wausau, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight standing before you as a taxpayer and as a business owner and as an advertising agency, representing interests of businesses who utilize billboards for advertising the products and services they provide for our community. I am here urging the full council to seriously consider renewing the five-year lease term with Lamar Outdoor for the space at Bridge and Third Streets in Wausau. Terms of the lease include a 60-day cancellation by either the city of Wausau or Lamar Outdoor, which would certainly be an adequate window of time if the city would have a need or find a buyer for the tiny piece of property. As a business owner and a taxpayer, my question for the city is, why would you not take advantage of the $45,000 in lease income until, at least until, a more profitable need arises? Why not continue to maintain a profitable agreement with Lamar Advertising? If the city does not renew the lease, the businesses that utilize the billboards at this location, and I stress "businesses," would needlessly suffer the loss of the most cost-effective advertising media available to them today during these very challenging pandemic times as businesses struggle to stay afloat. Removing an advertising venue in a location businesses depend on sends a discouraging message. Why billboards, you might ask? Why? They're very cost-effective, and they've reached the broadest demographic. I have a couple of examples of some things quickly that I'd like to show you, because some of you may have impressions of billboards that are not so beautiful. However, businesses like Cloverbelt Credit Union have used billboards for advertising not only their messages, but also we've sponsored an anti-bullying campaign with a local radio station. We've had over 92,000 Central Wisconsin students take the pledge. We've utilized this billboard space to promote this message as well as the local radio station. So, in a nutshell, I guess, where am I going for this? Ah-ha. In a nutshell, I thank you for your consideration, your careful consideration of renewing the city's lease with Lamar Advertising. Renewal of this lease is a sign of the city's support for local businesses. It's a prudent business decision, and it's a win-win for everyone involved. Thank you so much for considering this opportunity, which is profitable for the city and the businesses in our community.
Thank you. Next up, I have Gary Gisselman. You know the drill.
Yes, thank you very much. Gary Gisselman, 319 Park Avenue, Wausau, Wisconsin. First of all, I just come to urge your vote for the rezone of 1300 Cleveland Avenue. I was on the Plant Commission back in 2018, as well as the City Council, and the Plant Commission is, again, this year urging that rezone. So I feel confident that this City Council will look back at a couple of years ago with that, you know, the rezone to a residential. I think it was very fit at that time to zone it a residential, and I feel the same way at this time today. But I also, so I appreciate your vote for the rezone. But I also want to talk to the larger issue of 1300 Cleveland Avenue. I want to thank the leadership of the City Council for the committee, the whole, that starts to investigate and start to talk about the contamination of 1300 Cleveland Avenue. I think we have to move, and I urge you to move with some degree of deliberate speed so that I think the neighborhood can start to rest easy with regard to their environment on that side, on that part of the city of Wausau. I've seen through my years on the City Council, a lot of things happen on the Thomas Street corridor. Houses leveled, residences relocated. We have now the issues with regard to Riverside Park. The Wallico site has been in front of that neighborhood for, we don't know how long. They've had to face all of these issues. The neighborhood has had to face these issues for a long time. Now they're facing the issue of what is exactly happening at 1300 Cleveland Avenue. So I urge the City Council and the leadership of the City Council to move with deliberate action so that I think the neighborhood can start to feel somewhat safe. There was, with one of the Plant Commission meetings, a resident was saying, can I garden in my backyard this year? Well, he didn't know. I'm not sure if he's going to garden or not because of the fright that potential contamination is bringing to that neighborhood. And I think that the city, as echoed by the City Council, the City Council, the city knows that we do a lot to take care of our neighborhoods, streetlights, whatever it takes, really, to create safe neighborhoods. And I think this neighborhood wants a safe environment, and I think that it's up to the City Council. I think the city of Wausau would be behind you in taking a deliberate step and looking at and really finalizing the cleanup of 1300 Cleveland Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Will Harris. You could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Harris. I'm at 316 1/2 North 3rd Street, Hartland C., Wausau, Wisconsin, 54403. I thank the City Council today for being here. I represent District 3 from Marathon County on the board, and I'm here today to speak in support of the vote to rezone. And I think for a number of reasons, we should really consider doing so. First of all, there is a process for these things. There was a process, and there was a mistake. You know, we learned as kids, when you make a mistake, you apologize, and you try to correct that mistake at a basic level. And in a time where there is so much distrust and lack of public trust in our government, and the things that we see on the news out there, on the local level, on local government, our citizens should be able to trust what we say. And, you know, I'm not in opposition to business, but I believe in the notions of fair play. There's a process for that, and if they want time to present new ideas and things, they have to go through that process. But they should go through the process as they would had things gone the way that it should have in the first place. It is not fair to the people who you promised one thing to now say, oh, well, we made a mistake, but now we'll keep it. If you bump into someone, you say, hey, I'm sorry. But if you bump into them again, you're looking at assault, right? So do what's right. It's the will of the people. It's about the integrity of the process, and at a basic level, it's about maintaining trust in local government. So please, vote to rezone, because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from WASZ on the mall redevelopment plans.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to update the council. We want to talk a little bit about where we are in the schedule for demolition, talk a little bit about some of the things coming as well. Dave Ekman, Executive Director of GWPP, and WASZ is also here with me tonight to make a few comments, and we like to answer any questions that you may have. It is kind of hard to imagine that we have come such a long way in just over a year, and we are now at the doorstep of something which I think is going to be quite exciting. On April 5th, Dave posted a sign on the doors of the mall that essentially read, "Our mall is closed." Along with that, he included a heartfelt thank you to the stores, the employees, and the community for almost 40 great years of service. But now we are ready once again to move on with some of our new visions. On the scheduling side of things, it looks something like this. First of all, we have finished with our interior inspections for the abatement of hazardous items. Secondly, the physical removal of these items will occur over the next few weeks. We are de-energizing the mall, and WPS will have the gas and electric disconnected by the end of April. Our soils management plan has been approved by the Green Team of the Wisconsin DNR, and our onsite investigations will begin on April 21. All of the pre-demolition, demolition activities and permitting should make us ready to actually start demolition in the middle of May, starting at Sears End and then moving across the mall to the Penny's Building. This process will have minimal effect on the 3rd Street merchants, restaurants, downtown events, the Grand Theater, et cetera. It will be business as usual for the downtown home furniture and our parking ramps. This will be another example of Wausau on the move, and it will be an exciting thing for, I think, our community to witness. If all goes well with this plan, we are looking at being pad-ready sometime in August and moving forward with reconstruction of the streets and the building facades in 2021 and But now, this is all but the first step in a strategic plan for our community. The Greater Wausau Prosperity Partners initiations of their goals are already in full swing: job creation and talent creation, development of innovative companies, and the placemaking, making Wausau the best small city in America to live, to work, to play, and to raise a family. So it is just the first steps. Now we need to continue, if you would, on what we've been calling our playbook: the Greater Wausau Prosperity Plan, Wausau's Comprehensive Plan for Growth, our Tool Transportation Plan for the redoing of our downtown streets, the River Edge Parkway Master Plan and the South Riverfront Master Plan. These plans cannot be put on the back burner, and I would urge you, as a council and as a committee, to move forward and pursue the goals of these plans. Of primary importance to the success of what we are doing is the construction of high-quality, market-grade apartments. All of the plans, all of the plans I mentioned, place this as a priority. We need people living downtown as never before. The South Riverfront Master Plan concluded with this: The city might set a target of meeting 30% to 40% of the demand for market-grade apartments in downtown, capitalizing on the riverfront and walkable districts in the dining, entertainment, and shopping areas. That essentially equates to 1,320 units. Let's say it's 1,000 units, or basically the construction of 125 new units over the next eight years. And that is doable. Our North Riverfront, up to Bridge Street, can handle 200 units. Our Block 1, 3, and 4 can handle 300 units, and the South Riverfront, over 300 units. And now we are building this placemaking environment of walkable districts. So while we are here tonight to talk about the mall, in the process, we are also here as well to encourage all of us to stay the course. I am continually encouraged by our citizens to keep pressing on, as I'm sure many of you are. And I think it goes without saying is that we need to keep investing in our future and capitalizing on this powerful collaboration we have formed between our public and private partnership. David?
Thank you, Chuck. It's good to see all of you here. It's been a while, but thank you for being here. My name is Dave Ekman. I'm the president of WASZ Opportunity Zone, Inc. And as Chuck said, we did close the mall on the 5th, and a lot's been going on since. I just wanted to assure you, one, all the artwork that you see in the mall, see attached to the mall, all being preserved. So the eyebrow window that's over J.C. Penney entrance being preserved, the sculpture on the outside by J.C. Penney being preserved, the two ruby-red sculptures within the food court being preserved. Talking with Randy Verhassel and trying to ideate what would happen with the leaves hanging from Center Court, and we have some places for that. Working with Gary in the Historical Society to make sure anything relevant in that mall is taken out and given to the Historical Society. The county parks removed Boy with Boot this morning, and he is safely kept, ready for the next place wherever the community would determine that to go. Also, at the same time, you know, you can imagine all the things in a mall. Community Partners Campus has actively been in the mall identifying things that it can use in its new facility and is removing those, and we are supporting that where we can. Habitat for Humanity also starts removing items that will be used for repurpose, either to sell, to put in their homes that they build, or just to get some more cash resources for them. And tomorrow, Northern Valley Industries will be... some more cash resources for them. And tomorrow, Northern Valley Industries will be coming into the facility and looking to repurpose items, too. We strongly support the efforts to help any nonprofits to gain access in there and help to remove things that are appropriate to their missions. We're committed to that. So with some of the things Chuck was talking about, I'm also the President and CEO of the Greater Wausau Chamber of Commerce. And we are going to have a demolition going on, but WASZ Opportunity Zone is committed to ensuring that we have, coming out in this summer, after last summer, we want to have commerce, and we want to support our downtown business environment. So I just wanted to take care of a few things here. So last week, Friday, we met with River District, we're pulling together a team, if you will, River District, Wausau Events, Compass Properties, the Grand Theater, City of Wausau Public Works, City of Wausau Economic Development, the Chamber of Commerce, and then we've hired Ambridge Marketing and Communications. Why? We, as a downtown business community, we want to let people know we are open for business this summer, and we will be. But we know between now and August, what Chuck was talking about, that there's going to be some disruptive environment. WASZ is committed, and we're hiring Ambridge to help us develop an internal marketing strategy so that we can all communicate expediently, fast, so that when we know, when we see a Gantt chart of what Chuck might have coming up in the demolition process, that we're in front of this by month, if not weeks, weeks, if not months. So that's the, the goals. Let me tell you about the goals. Goals of this effort: to promote and protect the downtown businesses and residents, to communicate continually and engage with downtown stakeholders' constituents, to communicate to the general public and local media sources, to share development updates, to assuage fears and concerns about the project, to support businesses and help people get downtown, and to promote Wausau Downtown as open for business. And this work started last Friday with a stakeholder group, and actually begins tomorrow with Ambridge. And we will, you will, you will see and hear from us, not only in social media or emails to all of you and the citizens, but we will have a website at WASZ Opportunity Zone that will have a full update. Now, the other thing that Chuck was talking about, and this is really good news. When we started the economic development plan coming out back two years ago, we actually started to go down the pathway of saving Clark Island, if you're not aware. Clark Island is, it's the second power generating station in Wausau, I have since learned, but it sits there where Wausau Papers used to have its headquarters. And up until recently, WPS had planned to raise RACE, that building. We've managed to secure a lease with WPS, a long-term, two-twenty-year lease, so forty years, to save that building. And we are now currently just waiting on the Wisconsin Historical Society to allow us to beautify it, update it, and we'll be putting in an Industry 4.0 Center and Innovation Center, which will be built with our economic development partners, business and industry, UW Stevens Point, UW Stout, NTC, and be a place to connect as a hub to our K-12 institutions. That's going to help our companies to begin to transform in the digital age in Industry 4.0 and the fourth industrial revolution, of which we must compete. Another part of that is, we have, through a contract agreement, to secure the Historic Train Depot, which is right at Washington, 209 Washington. That will become the home of the Greater Wausau Chamber of Commerce. We will take possession, everything goes right with due diligence. We'll take possession on June 21st. At the same time, we'll be redeveloping the Clark Island Building. We will have a historic district situated on the Wisconsin River, the hardest-working river in the state, in the country, actually, and the World-class Kayak Course. And that will be an economic development complex that will lead into the gateway of downtown and to the new development that we'll be seeing here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I guess if anybody on this body has any questions, I would welcome that. Otherwise, I guess we look forward to continuing to hear from you. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have the consent agenda. We have file number 210301 through file number 210108. Do I have a motion? Motion by Neil? Oh, I'm sorry. What? Okay, I am, before I take that motion, I am going to pull out file number 210404. To vote on separately. This is why I'm glad to have buddies up here. Yep. Okay, so...
Mayor Rosenberg, I just wanted to mention there was an error in file number 21 dash zero four zero five. It was actually not approved of five to zero, it was four to one. In the actual minutes for, for finance, it is, it is corrected?
Okay, so I think that with housekeeping, we're okay to keep it in there as long as we're, the clerk is alerted, we will make sure that that is accurate. Okay, so I had a motion by Neil. Do I have a second? Second by Herbst. Any discussion here? Other than the housekeeping, we'll make sure that's updated. Okay, I think we're gonna, we're gonna keep voting because apparently we need a software update to use the buttons.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
Michelani? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes eleven to zero.
All right. Now we are going to come back to file number 210404. That is the Resolution Approving Sanitary Sewer Easement with American Associates, Inc. at 2105 Grant Avenue. Okay, so I guess before we get going, I would entertain a motion. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Peckham. Yes, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I had actually requested this item be removed from consent after we passed it. In SISAM, I received a message from our legal office requesting that we amend the size of the sewer easement from twenty, thirty feet to twenty feet. So I'll offer an amendment that we correct that size.
All right, so we...
And then move it forward.
We have an amendment and a second by Neil. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so first, we're voting on the amendment of changing thirty feet to twenty feet on that easement.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Michelani?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Motion passes eleven to zero.
All right, great. So we have an amended resolution. Any further discussion here? I'm not seeing any. I think we're ready to vote on the resolution as amended.
Michelani? Wadenski?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes eleven to zero.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to file number 210403, Mayor's Appointments. You can see here, we've got two appointments to WASZ Arts Commission, David Hummer and Linda Prain. Both are reappointments. WASZ Waterworks Commission, Jim Force, reappointment. And Board of Zoning Appeals, Nicholas Smith, has agreed to be our citizen alternative. I would entertain a motion to approve the appointments. Motion by Watson, second by Herbst. Any discussion? I don't see any. I think we're ready to vote on that one.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
Michelani? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes eleven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to file number 060909. It's a resolution approving the lease with Lamar Companies for billboard signs at Bridge Street and Third Street. Maybe before I entertain a motion, I would invite David Curtin to the front to give a little presentation on this.
Good evening. My name's Dave Curtin. I work for Lamar Advertising out of Central Wisconsin. We have the billboards on Bridge and Third, and I'd ask that you approve the lease renewal. So I guess I just wanted to give you some background. The facts and the background in your packets are, they remain the same as they were in 2015 when the lease was renewed. The signs have been in the corner of Bridge and Third for twenty-five years, and no new billboards are allowed in the current ordinance. Lamar is always improving on this, on the signage. We talked about downward lighting. Our company is in the process of going LED nationwide, so that would be something that would happen at this location. We feel that our signs enhance the properties. Even when sold, the new landowners can collect the lease income. These leases, as mentioned before, have a cancellation clause, so the city or prospective buyers can cancel the lease in sixty days. I've given you each a photo of the current signs. It has added signage in between the I-beams to highlight the fact that if the property is for sale, we can get produced and install right away. A message preferred by the city staff detailing that the land is for sale for that picture or whatever we can come up with, if that's something the city would want to do. That way, everybody knows that the land is for sale. So that's an option. In 2015, the signs were approved based on a collection of $8,000 in revenue for the City of Wausau. Now Lamar is offering $9,000 per year for a term of five years. That's $45,000 over the next five years. We believe this lease renewal to be a win-win for Lamar, the City of Wausau, and our local customers who use these signs to improve their businesses. The businesses have been hit especially hard by COVID over the past year, and we feel there's not an overabundance of billboards in Wausau, but the signs that remain are very valuable to our customers and your local businesses. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I am available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I guess with that, I would entertain a motion. Are you motioning? Yes, a motion by Wadenski, a second by Neil. Any discussion? Yes, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. We had some robust discussion on this in committee, and, you know, it's coming on a mixed recommendation. And I think part of, part of that discussion, just to sum it up, was that when we renewed this lease for the last five-year term, there was nothing happening in that area. Since then, many new developments have happened in that area, and that area, you know, adjacent to the riverfront is ripe for new development. So I think that the struggle we have is to try to balance, you know, really, our business sector's need for advertising and maybe even increased advertising post-pandemic with our need to prep a site for redevelopment. And so with that, I certainly can understand and appreciate the use of the sign, businesses that have advertised there. And I'm wondering if a compromise is perhaps that we not renew it for another five years. But we certainly renew it for perhaps a shorter term. So at this time, I would offer an amendment that we approve the renewal with Lamar for two years.
Okay, we have an amendment offered. Is there a second on this? Renewal for two years. We have a second by Herbst. All right, we're now talking about the amendment. Alder Neil, would you like to talk about the amendment, or? Yes? Nope? Okay. Any discussion about the amendment? Yes, Alder Wadenski.
So what's the difference if it's two years or five years? I mean, if we get someone that wants to buy the property in, in two months or four years, it doesn't really make a difference?
Yes, Alder.
My response, I guess, is, is that more frequent review of a contract like this allows us to take stock of what's happening in the area and keep our finger on that pulse rather than just automatically renewing for another longer period of time. That's not to say at the end of year two that we wouldn't consider another extension, but I think committing ourselves for a full five years may not be what's best for that area. And, you know, as business roars back from the pandemic, we may find new opportunity for that site sooner than later, especially since a number of, you know, sites adjacent to that corner are perhaps going up for sale or already up for sale.
Thank you. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I've been aware for over ten years of this area of Bridge Street and, and the riverfront has been hoping to be a redevelopment. Well, it's, it's taken a lot longer than they expected, and I remember when Head Start was offering their neighborhood group there and looking at some changes, and it was way before anything was being built. So to me, I think the corner where the billboard boards are, are a good location for maybe some type of restaurant or something that would want to appeal to the corner. But I do realize within that street and in that block is the bakery that has closed. The owners have retired. But I don't, we have no control of how quickly it will develop or not. And I would hope a developer would be looking at the majority of that block. But for the city, looking at different options of revenues, we have very limited. And the biggest one is, you know, real estate taxes and utility bills. So this is one revenue that we are allowed to have that can help offset other city expenses. So I do think, from what Jim was saying, that we could go ahead and renew. All it requires is a sixty-day notice to cancel for a developer or for the city and change your plans of what we want to do. But I do think they're offering a higher amount, and this type of revenue is going to be dwindling that we're, we're getting out of billboards. So this is something that we may want to control, and as a lot of the other development along the river, some of it is, has kind of taken over. But there's, this corner still hasn't happened yet. And there's lots of advertising there. I got a email from Mr. Hadley, and I remember when he was in business, that see his family growing up over the years. So I, I don't think we should necessarily cut short this revenue, which is unusual and something we're allowed to do, and that we are dwindling with, with allowing billboards. But it's something that even for this small amount, it's worthwhile to have until something happens. And then there's a sixty-day notice where it can be broken then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? As a reminder, we're talking about the amendment for two years. Yes, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. I guess when we talk about any contract, more frequent review of a contract also gives you time not only to take stock of what's going on in the area, but also to take stock of the revenue stream and whether or not it remains sufficient. So I think if we were to approve the amendment with a two-year window, renew it for two years, take stock of it in two years, determine if we want to continue at the same rate or continue at all, makes sense. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thought I saw a hand flutter. Maybe not. Okay, I think we're, we're voting on the amendment. The amendment is to extend a two-year offer instead of five.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
No.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadenski?
No.
Michelani? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Ryan?
No.
So motion passes six to five.
Okay, so now we have a resolution as amended. Is there any further discussion on this? Yes, Alder Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, all along, I've favored these signs going away at that location from an economic development standpoint. But I'm glad to see the renderings given to us tonight that show these billboards actually serving an advertising purpose that can help us in our marketing of the property. So that being said, I, I will support renewing as amended. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? I am not seeing anybody who wants to talk anymore about this, so I think we're ready to vote.
Michelani? Wadenski?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to one.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is file number 210120. That item, you may have received an email earlier about Tyler Knudsen pulling the offer, so I am pulling this item from our agenda. You might... All right, the next item on the agenda is file number 210120. That item, you may have received an email earlier about Tyler Knudsen pulling the offer, so I am pulling this item from our agenda. You might get to talk about this again in economic development. So we are now moving on to file number 191109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2020 budget modification and reallocating some project funds. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Watson, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion here? Doesn't look like it. I think we're ready to vote.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadenski?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much. We are now on to file number 210407. That's an ordinance from the Plan Commission rezoning 1300 Cleveland Avenue from a medium industrial zoning district to a multifamily residential zoning district. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neal, second by, oh my goodness, Larson. Alder, Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what we have in front of us is a fairly straightforward housekeeping item, and as my county board counterpart had stated, as well as a residence and a former Alder person, that this really was a zoning map error, and it did go through a legally valid process. So the error was legally valid, but nevertheless, it was unintentional. And as stated earlier by the public, that I think the public understands that everyone can make mistakes, honest mistakes, whether that's a person or a government unit. But the public also fully expects, I believe, that those mistakes and errors are corrected both swiftly and justly. So this is a really straightforward correction of an error. And, you know, beyond that, I think we rarely see as much public feedback as we've seen on this issue, both through emails and submission forms, and we've certainly seen a lot of public comments at, at various meetings, too. So not only is this, I believe, the honorable thing to do for our body to correct this mistake, it's also the overwhelming sentiment we've received from the public. And lastly, and this came up at the Plan Commission, and I think some on the commission who'd had some early concerns about this rezoning later supported it when we had talked about this matter. And that matter was, you know, the zoning is dynamic, and that doesn't mean that it's ever written in stone, per se. But I think what is, what is important is we, we go back to a legitimate baseline. So if companies like 3M Company and Colby &amp; Colby want to take a shot at this property for expanding their industrial operations, then that should be done through a regular error-free process, because such process allows notification of residents and property owners around that site. They have the ability to weigh in, as would be done in any legitimate error-free process. So when terms are used, and I heard these messaging points leveraged at the Plan Commission, and as compelling as they may sound, they're also very inaccurate. So when it says it should, there should be no rush, that it's premature, that it's binding hands, and that there should be an informed decision, which is what we're hearing from the 1% to 2% of parties who oppose this, that's not accurate. So zoning is dynamic, it's not premature, and this is an informed decision of simply correcting our mistake. So I hope we heed the people's feedback tonight, and we just do some housekeeping and, and make this right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to support the rezoning to this simply because this borders my district here, and I receiving complaints about Colby &amp; Colby's trucks going up and down the streets at all hours of the days and nights, and I say nights, when I was told by one constituent that once they were told they, they could do that down there, that they wouldn't be going, they'd be just doing their trucks during the day. And I'm also, so I, I'm also because of the overwhelming support by the city and the emails and stuff we received, I, I sit here as a servant of the people, and therefore the people are, I'm, I'm going to vote not only for the people, but in 2018, a lot of my constituents here voted unanimously to make this residential, so I'm going to stick with their decision also. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. It's important to recognize, I think, when we talk about this, I mean, yes, a mistake got made and change in the zoning when we did our citywide rezone, but it's also important that we understand that we know things about that site that we did not know at the time. So when the council originally rezoned that to residential, that was at the behest of the former community development, or economic development director, who was looking to return that property to the tax rolls and develop it and, you know, find a use for that property. That said, that gentleman was not from Wausau and didn't understand the colored history of the parcel, and I've wondered for some time if that parcel ever should have been offered up for anything based on its history. And so in our Economic Development Committee, when we talked about this, we were all in agreement that we wanted robust testing on that site to find out what's really in there, based on records that Alder Killian had discovered and, and reviewed even prior to his election to Wausau City Council. And so we went forward with this robust testing, and we found things are in there. And I don't dispute the fact that the site needs cleaned up. Whatever's in there needs to be cleaned up. But I also wrestle a little bit with going back to a residential zoning class, because I believe that we can make deliberate movements for cleanup without going to a residential zoning class. I'm in fact interested in what zoning class it could be that perhaps doesn't necessarily further industry, but would also keep people from living on it. It's going to be a tough sell for me to ever allow anyone to live there. And when we asked for the robust testing, one of the things that we wanted to discern is what that site is good for, if anything, and what if it's good for nothing? What if it's, what if it's bad enough that you don't ever want people living there? Well, if you take it to a residential zoning class, are we then not also, you know, there's no guarantee that all of us who are involved with this decision now will still be around in 10 years, and will some other council and some other, you know, developers and whatnot decide this is a great place for houses or apartments or whatever? One of the original proposals for it when we went to RFP was an apartment complex. Well, we know now with what's all wrong with the site, that should have been a non-starter, and it was. And so I worry about leading our community to believe that that is a place where we want people living, because I don't think we should want residential there. And, you know, I think that part of the support for the rezoning to residential is solely to force a cleanup. But if we all agree that we want to clean it up either way, I, I wonder if this parcel shouldn't have a different class of zoning, because I even cleaned up, I just don't feel from all eco. And, you know, if we clean up 1300 Cleveland, should, should people be living there? Should people be digging, gardening, like, like commenters have said? And I just, I don't think that that's appropriate on that site, given what we know. But the fact that we know it now, I think we should maybe think twice about going to a residential class, because when we did it before, we didn't know what was in that soil.
Thank you. Alder Peckham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good points are being made. One of the things, when I pushed the button, was that I wanted to thank Alder Killian for bringing up the concept that the zoning on any property is dynamic. I've read two news stories from the same source in the last three weeks or so that if we change this to residential, that that's it. That's permanent, that's final. F-I-N-A-L, final, it slams the door on anything other than residential. And I'm wondering if, I think Planner Lenz is on the call with us, and I wonder if he could explain that, because when the Planning Commission voted on this, I made the point that perhaps wasn't heard, is that we can change this. You know, we can change it to, you know, anything reasonable. And I don't want to give the impression that we're locked in with this and this is the end of the story, and then we've got citizens with torches outside, because we went back on our word when that wasn't our word. So Mr. Lenz, could you, if I may, ask him to explain the situation with the permanence of this measure?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll take these out. So, yeah, it's, as been mentioned before, and I guess particularly because the city owns the property, we have a lot more control over it than just, you know, a zoning classification. But, you know, we can rezone property at any time. You know, there is a process, a public process, there's notifications and so forth, but we can certainly do that. This isn't a permanent thing. This, if this does go through tonight, it will actually be the fourth time in as many years that this property has been rezoned. And, you know, the land use has not changed at all. So, you know, zoning, again, when the city owns a property, it's not necessarily the foremost thing that we look at in determining the land use. I mean, there's a process that we go through, and generally, there's specific proposals that we're responding to, but, you know, that's, I think, some of the trouble here is that we're getting out in front of it, which is good, but it's, it's, we're sort of talking theoretical, and the cleanup is getting tied into it. You know, we're not responding to a specific proposal. When we do have one that we're considering, you know, we could look to potentially a variety of different zoning classes. One of them could be a planned unit development, which could actually be the most restrictive option that we have, because we can specify exactly what can and can't take place on that site in much more detail than we can in just a sort of general zoning district, which actually allows multiple different types of land use. So I guess to answer your question, yes, we can consider different zoning at any point as long as we go through the process.
Thank you. Alder Peckham, did you have any follow-up question or?
No, I appreciate that information. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Neal, I have you next.
Okay, thanks again, Mayor. Well, all along, through the various discussions on this subject, I've always believed and expressed that there's a twofold thing that I'm interested in accomplishing here. One, of course, is to rectify an error, just to, just to do that. Simple as that. But two is, when you achieve this level of zoning, we are now paving the way for the optimum effectiveness of cleaning up that property. So I think that is also in full respect to the neighbors who have, you know, in, in large numbers, asked us to take care of that problem. So I think it's beholding upon us, beholden upon us to, to do that. That all being said, and I've said this prior several times in meetings and whatnot, this does not mean that zoning it residential or multifamily residential means that that's what's going to end up happening with that property in terms of development. Could be, and, you know, if some, a development proposal came along to that end, well, at least the property will have been cleaned up to accommodate such a development. But we can also consider other proposals that might come and deal with those on an ad hoc basis, knowing that they have a clean piece of land to work on, and to make sure that whoever goes there and whatever they do there is a clean operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be very brief. Alder Neal literally took the words out of my mouth as if they'd been channeled telepathically to him, so I won't reiterate most of that, but I will tell you that, you know, I think it was a very astute observation on his part about regulatory authority, and we can email the DNR. We have, they've come here and they've spoken, and yes, this, this would give the DNR the, the authority to require that certain standards are cleaned up, too. And my colleagues had brought up other potential uses in the future that weren't residential, so have various residents and community members. I think those will still be options on the table potentially down the road, but as Alder Neal said, it's correcting the mistake and, and, you know, justly addressing the concerns of, of the public, and those concerns have been expressed in high volume. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. That kind of telepathy is what happens when we all sit close to each other again.
You're so close.
Yeah. My, my perspective on this is that we don't need to rezone it to clean it up. We already own the property. So when we own something, we can make a choice to clean it up regardless of what its zoning is, because we are the owner. And so I wonder if we are not getting lost in the idea that the zoning is the solution. The zoning isn't the solution, the cleanup is. And so I wonder if we are more effective if we were to table the rezoning indefinitely and separate, and in addition to that, give a directive to our Economic Development Committee that it obtain estimates on various options for cleanup regardless of the land use. I mean, we can get an idea of what cleanup to an industrial level costs, we can get an idea of what cleanup to a residential level costs, regardless of what the zoning class is. And I don't want us to get confused with, you know, the semantics when the remedy is in front of us, whether we do anything with the zoning or not.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little brief what Alder Rasmussen said there. I, I really think that we really do need to correct this mistake, because by putting it off, we're just opening the door to, we're opening the door or prolonging the results to, for our citizens in their neighborhoods. You know, we're also leaving Colby &amp; Colby and, and 3M or dangling a carrot in front of their arms. Are they going to, you know, we need, we need to, we need to be definite on this, and we need to act on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have similar concerns about, yes, putting it back to its original designation, and then especially for residential, there seems to be higher standards that the DNR would expect to happen. But we had been talking previously and had the DNR in, and at, I believe, a meeting or two ago, and their recommendation was to cap the entire property, and that there is a former laundry cleaners on Second Avenue right next to Domino's that had similar contamination issues, and that it's been, it's been capped by asphalt, and that it's supposed to be capped that way. They're not supposed to be digging down, that's all it's supposed to be, and continue with that in the future, and then be monitored again in another 20 years. My concern is, we may want to, as a city, say, let's go down a foot and take all the contaminants out. And I'm not a native, so I can't, I can't really say what happened decades ago. But what if there's plumes of toxins that are 20, 30 feet below? At what point can we really satisfy someone that wants to build a house and say it's safe? I don't know if we can do that. And, but if we go by the residential of, of category, that will put it at the highest definition of what it would have to be cleaned up as, but I think it's going to take some time to find out what actually is going to be safe. But from, in my opinion, I wouldn't want anyone to be building there if there was any case of contamination, or they decided to go down and build a drilled well or a swimming pool that would go down maybe eight or 10 feet, that at a certain point, we're not going to know what's below at a certain point on this property. So, but as we, as we come through other meetings in the future, hopefully, we can find out more and see what our options are.
Thank you. Okay. So I have not warned Becky about what I'm about to do, so it's going to get weird. I would like to speak to this issue, but as Chair, I need to cede the gavel to you, Becky. So I'm going to come around, I'm going to give it to you. And then I would ask that you call on me. And then I won't be back in my chair until you call for the vote.
Promise?
So, I just want to explain to everybody what's going on, because it's kind of weird Robert's rules machinations. So I'm just gonna...
Mayor Rosenberg, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. So I just wanted to give my two cents on this. And since if I do it up there, I appear partisan and kind of messing with the vote, I'm going to do it here. So I am on Plan Commission. I'm the Chair of Plan Commission, and I voted in favor of this rezone. And as I thought about it, you know, I thought, it's just a small kind of housekeeping step, right? What does it matter? But, you know, when I was on County Board, we had a big discussion about metallic mining in the county. And one of the things I really wanted to see was public hearings. Anytime anybody wanted to open a metallic mine in the county, I wanted the public, the neighbors, everybody, to have that opportunity to talk about, do I want this in my neighborhood? And so, you know, I put myself in that spot. And I think the same thing here. I think that we should rezone this to residential, so that anytime anybody, like, we'll have a really good, robust discussion, we'll have a public hearing. I just think this is the right thing to do. So I just want to give my two cents, and thank you very much, and sorry, Becky.
Alder Peckham, you have your light on.
Thank you, Chair McElhany, for the minute. You going to stay out there?
According to Robert's rules, I have to stay away from the chair until the vote is taken.
Ooh, okay. This is new territory for us. I find myself in agreement with Alder Rasmussen on this for slightly different reasons. And I also, on Plan and Commission, was entirely in favor of the rezone. And now I'm realizing that, I think we're about three-quarters or seven-eighths of the way to the point where we're really going to be knowledgeable enough about the extent of the cleanup that would be necessary for business use or residential use on that property. We aren't there yet. And so, contrary to Alder Rasmussen, I'm not ready to say there can't be residential there. We might be able to do it. But, and we also, Director of Public Works Lindman wrote to the Department of Health Services and asked a state toxicologist to give us an assessment of the, you know, level of risk in the neighborhood as a result of the contamination that's been identified. So I really don't like tabling things, but that might be the best move on this until we know more.
Was that a motion?
Not at this point. Talk a little more.
Okay. Alder Killian.
Thank you. I am the older person for the district, and I would not support tabling this. And I believe my, the other representative for the district who spoke tonight also would not, nor would all of the residents in the packet, those comments, page after page after page after page. And yes, I will respond to one thing since my name was invoked. And yes, I had spent some time, quite a bit of time, you know, perhaps days at DNR offices years ago in Madison, Eau Claire, other places. And yes, I dug up a lot of records about Connor Forest Industries and their environmental misdeeds on that property. And I also, incidentally, enjoyed 75% support in the ward that this property sits in. So I think if there was ever a mandate to speak for the people on environmental issues, perhaps I enjoy that tonight. So I would say absolutely not. No tabling. As Alder Neal said, this error must be corrected. And with DHS, let, let them give their opinion. But just like Riverside Park, this is an environmental justice area. And what that means, it's a diverse working class area. We must use the most protective standards available for remediation. And often, that is not DHS. A toxicological opinion has really no relevance to state regulatory standards, as I think the WDNR would probably echo. So we have to use the appropriate regulatory standards. We learned that lesson from Riverside Park, and it was a learning lesson. I'm, I'm not lambasting anyone involved, but we learned that. And I think we learned we, we should use DNR regulatory standards. So as the older person, I would urge to not table this and to just correct the error. And if there are attempts at zoning changes in the future, so be it. But they'll go through the right process. Thank you.
Okay. Any more comments? If not, I think we're ready to vote.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Hertz?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Okay. Feel like a little hamster. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a motion to suspend the rules. That's 12A, referral of resolutions and ordinances. That does require a two-thirds vote. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neal, second by Wadinsky. You can vote on that one. Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Hertz?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. All right. Thank you very much. Right now, here we are on file number 110505. That is a resolution designating May 15, 2021, as World Migratory Bird Day. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Wadinsky, second by Watson. Any discussion? I think this is part of us being a bird city, USA, so I think we're ready to vote. McElhany?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Hertz?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you very much. All right. We are moving on to file number 150708. It's a resolution approving infrastructure easement with River Life Wassa LLC Phase 1. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neal, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? I don't see anybody. I think we can vote. Ryan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Hertz?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
McElhany?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0. Thank you very much. All right. We are moving on now to file number 020432. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 2.16, Standing Rules of the Common Council, Rule 2, Quorum Required, and Rule 4, Absence of Members. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Martins, second by Larson. Any discussion? Yes, Alder McElhany.
Thank you. I, I, this is regarding WebEx and continuing on in WebEx. It had, I think everybody got noticed that it was inadvertently not noticed that we had expired in December 31st. I am not going to support continuing on WebEx, and I will give you my brief kind of soliloquy here, as quickly as I can, we've been here, but of how this started and how it's going, and how, and some perceptions of residents that I have that contacted me. When we started this in March of 2020, it was a weird time. We, you know, this was never even thought that we could do this. It passed very narrowly. It was a, quite a robust discussion. It was at the beginning of the pandemic, before safer at home. Our, our intention at that point in our discussion was, it was going to be a very narrow focus. We were going to, we were worried about a shelter in place, safer at home, and we needed to continue city business. And number two, our worry was, if numerous members are quarantined, city business may come to a halt. And if they would be quarantined, but still well enough to, you know, be at a meeting, we didn't have a way of doing that because of a quarantine. I do not believe, we believed at that time, or I will say only for me, I did not believe it was going to go on and on and on. I think, you know, we needed to at a certain point. But I am, we do, I have gotten a lot of complaints from residents. They feel, you know, they're, it's new. It's technology. Many don't like it. They feel that some are not engaged while on WebEx, or spend some little, some antics once in a while. We have a transparency issue that I have talked to the city attorney over people that can't hear the vote from the outside, from the residents, or, or, you know, we can't see them on camera, or if we go into closed session, you know, who is in, in the background talking to them? You know, we're talking in council rules about the use of cell phones. We don't have any idea of that. I, I don't worry about that. I'm not worried about any of you, but residents do. And they don't know you. And they always, their perception is their reality. So I, I talked to the mayor earlier today with my, my points of view on this. I, I think we're opening pools, we're having concerts on the square. COVID is still an issue, absolutely. Vaccinations are available now. We're here together, and we're having a robust conversation. I think that is proof enough that this is doing the people's business in the open and transparent. And so I am not supporting continuing it. The only thing that, and it is a lot of work for the, for the clerks. I've heard from both clerks saying that is extremely a large amount of work when we, when we have people on WebEx. I guess I do have a question, because we do still want to keep numbers down, and staff, especially department heads, are encouraged to attend. Is it as much work if department heads attend WebEx as, you know, compared to council members because they don't vote?
Nope, it doesn't create any extra work if it's just department heads.
Okay. I mean, that I would allow, or I would say, okay, because that does keep the, the amount of people in here, and allow our audience to come in, because it's not filled with department heads. But that's my, that's my, my wishes, and that's my spiel, is that I'd like this to go away. I worry if we can, it's become an easy way to attend. And I'm as guilty as, you know, and I wrote that in the email, I'm guilty. It's really tough for me to get to ED from my, you know, work. And it, you know, but there's always computer glitches, and I can't hear a speaker, and it's frustrating. And I made it, and I thought, you know, Becky, you made it, every, for four years, every meeting, you can get back to that. So I, I hope we really, you know, talk about this. You know, five of you have only known WebEx, and it is, I, I feel that I'm, I'm really worried if we continue this, well, let's keep extending it. It, it will become a forever thing. And I, I think, I also, one other thing is the voting. I can't wait till we get into the button voting. That's been brought up to me. I, you know, the clerk's doing the best job of trying to, you know, move things around. But I like when voting, you don't hear who's voting for what before you vote. It's all voting at the same time. It's another really transparent way of doing things for our residents. And then they know there's no chicanery going on. So those are my reasons, and I, I hope we do end it, but I will, I will go to the will of the body. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I just wanted to let you know, Alder McElhany, so the, with the Windows 10 upgrade, we were having trouble with the voting system crashing this morning. So it may take a little bit before we can use the voting system again, which I'm going to work with IT to see what we can do. Just so everyone knows that it might be a couple of meetings when we're all together before we can actually use the voting system again. Okay? And maybe a budget mod, I'm not sure. We'll see. Thank you. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I did get an inquiry today about the eliminating, hopefully, the virtual WebEx. And I guess for me, I'm a baby boomer, and I did happen to have some concerns in trying to get the vaccine since January. And I just happened to have low iron that was diagnosed in the fall, and was able to get a transfusion to get my iron back in the normal level. But I was concerned, was I putting myself at risk? And so that's why I was, I was using it. And that, I do think at some point, there may be some staff or, or an older that may have some medical issues going on, so that there, that might be something we want to do as an exception, but not a regular thing. Because we seem to have a more robust discussion when we are all in person. But I, I do feel like we're, we're at the point now with the vaccines and that, that there really isn't much need. And, and I do think we have a better discussion when we're all here in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I'll just weigh in on this, because I was, I guess I'll say, as council president past, responsible for our use of WebEx in the first place, when we had a need to keep the council and the public safe, when there were so many unknowns. I do think that WebEx is a complicating factor. I think that with numbers coming down and vaccines going up in our area, I think we can safely back away from WebEx at this point. That's not to say, though, that if something happens in our area where cases are going up, where we're seeing that surge, we can vote to bring WebEx back just as easily as we vote to let it go. And so if we see a trend where, you know, maybe people are back into quarantining, and maybe our caseloads are going up, and hopefully, we don't have what's going on in Michigan. But if we would have something happen where we're going the wrong direction, we as a body can decide that we can go back to WebEx. We don't have to keep it to be able to use it again. It's a, it's a one-meeting decision. It was a one-meeting decision to bring it out in the first place. So I think we're okay to try to let this go, and see how things go for the next few months. And if it's not what we planned, we could always bring it back.
Thank you. I just want to give you a brief update. Through the league, we talked about this, and it seems like many municipalities are coming back in person. May, June, July, that's the timeline they're looking at. So we're right on par with the rest of the state. And the city attorney also has something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out before you vote, that as you look at this ordinance in front of you, Rule 2 was changed in two ways with two separate resolutions, which are now joined together. So if you vote yes on this ordinance amendment, what's highlighted there in yellow, you are approving continued remote meetings, but you're also approving continued personal appearance for closed session. So those are the two amendments that are in there. So if you wanted to change that, you'd have to amend to, you know, if you didn't agree with both of those, you might want to move to change one of those. But if, looking at it the way it is, if you vote no, then the remote meetings are going away, and you need to appear in person for closed session, because it's going to look exactly, the three sentences that will be left are left in white. All of the yellow highlighting is gone. So is that clear? As mud? Thank you.
Any further discussion, or are we ready? Yeah, Alder McElhany.
I, I just have a question. So if we vote, if I vote no, WebEx goes away, but it still demands that you have to be in person for closed session, correct? Because I thought, I don't, okay, okay, so.
Okay. Thank you. It looks like we, it looks like we are ready to vote. Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
No.
Neal?
Wait a second. We are voting to accept the yellowed.
Yes.
It's a do-over.
Yes, if you vote yes, you're moving to amend the ordinance again to allow for remote meetings.
To continue to allow for remote meetings.
If you vote yes. If you vote no, then you don't want remote meetings.
I vote aye.
Alder Peckham is asking to change his vote. Can you do that right now?
Yes.
Are we ready to start over? Do we feel good about what we're voting on? We're voting in favor of remote meetings, but also in-person for closed session participation. That is a yes vote.
That would be the same either way. So the amendment requires, it, it's just clarified that you have to be in person for closed session.
Neal?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
No.
McElhany?
No.
Rasmussen?
No.
Watson?
Aye.
Herbst?
No.
Larson?
No.
Ryan?
No.
The motion fails 4 to 7.
So, we are no longer doing remote meetings for council members. All right. I just need one clarification now. All right. Next item, I'm going to move over to the addendum, that is file number 201018. That's a resolution approving a settlement offer to settle a claim filed with Zagster Inc. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Watson, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion here? Yes, Aldra Rasmussen?
Thank you. Just a clarification, because this took place in the finance meeting immediately preceding this meeting, and the number of us weren't there. So, a while back, we had, as you'll recall, Zagster was the company that was contracted to provide bicycles on the Riverwalk. We had used some foundation funds to pay for half of that contract, and Zagster essentially collapsed. They offered us a settlement a while back of $900, which we were unimpressed by, so we decided to wait it out and see what happens. Since then, they've come back and wanted to settle for about 25% of our claim, that's about $4,500. And so, tonight, the finance committee supported accepting the settlement at the 25% figure for approximately $4,500, knowing that we now own the bikes, we are in possession of the bikes, and we can repurpose those. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? I think we're ready to vote on this one.
McElhany?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Peckham?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. And before we go to the closed session items, I would like to invite the public, if there are any more public comments, didn't get your comments in yet, you're welcome. Looks like anybody that wanted to spoke, think, oh, okay. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Donna Krause, 1036 South Fourth Avenue, Wausau, Wisconsin 54401. I live one block from Colby and Colby, and when I moved to this area, I, I live at the corner of Thomas Avenue, Thomas Street and South Fourth Avenue, which I believe that that's just the, the ward dividing line there, the, the east side of Fourth is a different district or ward in, from the, from the west side of the street. So, and I, I go and, to the bus stop, which is right there by Colby and Colby, that large field there. Where I moved, and I'm, I'm in a high housing, low-income housing, and it's a little bit of a low income, too, a very bad area, Third Street's considered a, Third Avenue's considered a pretty bad area. But anyway, there's four drug busts a week in my, in this area. And I, I moved into, when I moved into that house, I saw it was the worst lawn I had seen in my 30 years of renting. It was really bad weeds, and when I moved in, the grass was about a foot, foot and a half high, they hadn't mowed it. And so, I love plants and gardening and, and environment and things, and I put in all these beautiful gardens. I knew, I had this instinct, I knew that I could not grow food there. I'm not really a vegetable grower, but I know a lot of people use their yards to grow lots of nice vegetables, and I knew I couldn't do that. I just had a sense that there was some kind of contamination in the soil, and it could have been just the people where I lived, they could have dumped their oil on the lawn, or emptied their ga, their lawnmower gas tank or something. But I purposely refused to plant any kinds of edibles because of the high-traffic area right there, all that traffic, and now it's even worse, and because I, I just felt that the soil was contaminated. I grew up on a farm, and I planted gardens, flower gardens and herb gardens in different areas where I've lived in Wausau. So, I just had this feeling, this sensation, that it was not safe to plant edible, something that I would be eating in that type of contaminated soil. I just had that sense. And I, I also did with that park system, too, that, that water in that, in that park, because Unitary Universal's church had their church parks there, and I knew, I just had that sense coming up from the water, that there were those chemical fumes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else lined up for public comment, so I guess I would entertain a motion, if there's an older that would like to read the closed session language. I would love that. Yes, Aldra Watson?
All right. I move to go to closed session pursuant to 19.85, paragraph 1, subsection F, considering financial, medical, social, and personal histories of specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, and 19.85, paragraph 1, subsection G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved for the purpose of considering a workers' compensation settlement between the city of Wausau and an employee.
Okay. I would love for you to continue reading all of the closed session language.
Oh, otherwise, I can take seconds on them individually, and we can pass the torch to some other folks to say. So. I'll take one for the team.
Okay.
I also move to go to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, paragraph 1, to sub G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the rendering of oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved, specifically regarding the memorandum of understanding with the Wausau Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau. I also move to go to closed session pursuant to section 19.85, paragraph 1, sub E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business, public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding the sale of city-owned property at 510 South 32nd Avenue.
All right. So, Aldra Watson has moved that we go into closed session for all of these reasons. Do I have a second? Second by Herbst. All right. I think we need to vote each individual.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.